Hello to you guys watching. To give you a sense of what the agenda for this open house and public hearing is, the first few minutes of our event is time for residents to go around and speak to our representatives here. And there's this PowerPoint playing in the background. So how I'm structuring this Facebook Live is to show you this PowerPoint first, and then to get into the presentation portions that we have prepared. And then when residents are breaking into groups to do discussions later on, we will go talk to the representatives here at our open house. That is what you can look forward to, that is what you're seeing right now. Loop presentation with information for residents who might not have seen this before. When I put that on, it's like presentation stuff?
Sure.
So I can get away? Looks like we are going to get started. It's on the way.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. My name is Sasha Marshall, and I'm a senior planner with the City of Houston Housing and Community Development Department. Welcome to our fall open house and our public hearing. I want to acknowledge everybody that came, but especially the U of H College of Social Earth. We look forward to hearing from you tonight. First, I'm going to introduce our director, Tom McCathlin, who's going to give us a few words and welcome you in.
Thank you, Sasha. Good evening. It's great to be back in the Gulfton area again. We were in this very room just about a year ago talking about Harvey recovery. So it's good to be back here. One of our commitments is not just to drop in and disappear, but to be back on a regular basis talking to the community members. So we greatly appreciate having you here this evening. Just a couple of words, and then I'll get it back over to the team. We are a mostly federally funded organization. And one of the things that we do on an annual basis is to go out and talk to community members about how we should use the federal funds, how we can improve on the way that we're using them currently, what we can, what we need to keep doing that we're doing, what we can change that we needed to be doing better. And so a lot of tonight's conversation is going to be focused around that. And we've got many things planned for you. And we are not focused only on disaster recovery tonight. The funding in particular that we'll be discussing is our regular funding that we receive every year. But since disaster recovery is on everyone's mind, especially with Hurricane Dorian hitting the East Coast, the two-year anniversary of Hurricane Harvey, just a quick update, we are moving and continuing to move forward with the disaster recovery. We have reimbursement checks going out, homes getting, repairs getting started, and our first fully reconstructed homes getting completed right now. So that work continues. If you have questions about that, please ask us. If you have questions on the rental side, where's, see, multifamily, the guy with the weight in his hand right now, he is the person to talk to. You can look at where some of our new rental units are going to be coming, some of that using disaster recovery dollars to replace the affordable units that were lost as a result of Harvey. Anything else that I should have mentioned that I haven't, Sasha? All right, Mary? Are we good? All right, well, I'm going to hand it over. I'm going to be here until we wrap up, but I'll hand it back over to the team for group discussions. And then, and then we'll certainly have a time for the public hearing portion, where people can stand up and make comments with us. One of the things that we found previously was when we just had public comment in just presentations to you, we didn't get that kind of interaction that really allowed us to walk away with a much deeper understanding of what the community wanted. So we start with that interaction around the table, talking to you about your particular communities, your particular needs and interests. And then that often sparks people's ideas for comments that they want to get later that we put into public record that will go on the highlight. So thank you again for being here. We know it's a big commitment out of your evening. We're very happy to be here in Gulfton, looking forward to the conversation this evening.
So I want to get started by telling you a little bit about what we do. It would help if I would get out of the way. So, we are the Housing and Community Development Department, and our vision is, we envision a city where everyone has a home they can afford and a community where they can thrive. I'm sure everyone shares that same mission. And there are some pictures of some of the things that we have done. We spent about approximately forty-five million dollars in federal funding to improve quality of life for all Houstonians, especially low to moderate income Houstonians. And so we invest into affordable housing. You can see a picture right here of our affordable housing that we did for our disaster recovery program. Also, we spent a lot of money on infrastructure improvements. Hybern is a community grocery store because we had a food desert in that neighborhood, so we did invest into there. And then also, we do a lot of work for supportive services. And that's a picture of the Houston Food Bank. And we invest in a lot of other areas to provide improved quality of life for low to moderate income Houstonians. So this is where we get our funding from. The City of Houston receives four entitlement grants each year from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. These grants are given to us by a specified formula in that takes into account various demographic characteristics of Houston. So our first, this is our most flexible funding source, is C D G. That stands for Community Development Block Grant. And so we finance housing with that money. We also invest in public services. Public services is supportive services, let's say. And also, public facilities and economic development. We have home funds, Home Investment Partnerships Grant, that promotes public partnerships to expand affordable housing stock. We also use HOPO funds. HOPO stands for Housing for People with AIDS and that, and their families as well. And it funds social services such as medical care, a lot of job training, mental health, things like that, to help persons with HIV/AIDS or families. And also, E S G, it stands for Emergency Solutions Grant. And this supports housing and sheltering for people who are experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. So this is why we really, really need your help. Right now, we are developing two plans, one of which is the 2020 Consolidated Plan. And this is a five-year strategic plan with long-term goals and objectives to improve quality of life, improve public facilities, and just overall, a lot of services that we provide to the community. But we have to know what the community needs, and that's so we know how to direct funding appropriately. So this is what this plan does. And we have another plan called the Analysis of Repetitiveness to Fair Housing Choice. That's going to be our 2019 document. And this starts as a fair housing planning. When we say fair housing, we mean the Fair Housing Act of 1968 that says it is illegal to do housing discrimination against certain protected classes. So this document forms as our basis for fair housing planning. It assesses the fair housing, what we're experiencing as far as fair housing discrimination is concerned, and says this is what Houstonians are facing right now. We set goals and to meet and say, "We are going to end housing discrimination in these ways." The actions that we're going to take to accomplish that all together, the city and the public, and all of our community partners. So this document is very important as well. So we are engaging the public to get information to inform both of these communities. And this is what we've been doing so far. We have really been doing a lot of community engagement with several different people, such as Baker Ripley. That's right across the street. I had a meeting over there not too long ago to tell them, "Hey, we need your input. This is what's going on in the City of Houston. We need to understand people's affordable and fair housing issues, right? So we have to talk to the public. We don't know how to help you if we don't get your input." So we spend a lot of time engaging the public. And so we're going to take all of that input and develop goals. How can we overcome these barriers to fair housing choice? One barrier I see is the lack of affordable, a lack of homeownership in African-American and Hispanic communities. It's substantially less than other households. So to me, that's a goal. How can we improve homeownership in these, in African-American and Hispanic communities? So we're going to create strategies for that. One strategy for that is our Home Buyer Assistance Program that Brandy in the back, she administers. And we give up to thirty thousand dollars in down payment assistance to help get those people into the homes of their choice and neighborhoods of their choice that's affordable to them, right? And so we are going to continue to obtain input and push out a draft plan. And we're going to come back to you and say, "Here's the draft plan. It's here, it's available at our department, it's available at the main library, it's available online. We want you to read it, did we get it right? And we need you to submit your public comment and say, 'You got this right, you didn't get this right, don't forget about this.'" And so we put that as part of the record in the plan, and then we push the plan out. And we want to work the plan with you. So this is why your input is important. We want to build with you so throughout the next five years, we can all do this together. And it's not just a plan that sits on the shelf and gathers dust until the next five-year period when we have to write it again. So these are our public engagement activities. We've done a lot of surveys. Please, 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 we have paper surveys for you to fill out tonight. If you can, before you leave, please take some time, and we'll take a little bit of time, but we always take time for the things that we really want to do. We really need your input. Take some time and complete one of our community needs surveys. Please see Chris Robinson in the back. She has some surveys to give you. We will take your input and we will use that input to inform our analysis of the sentiment in our conference. We've done a lot of express surveys. So an express survey is, does anyone know about the Fair Housing Act of 1968? A lot of people don't even know this act exists. They don't know that they are protected from housing discrimination. When we go out to the public and we say, "Do you know about the, did you know it was illegal to discriminate against you based on your race?" And they say, "Well, the landlord said he didn't like that I had a bunch of kids and he wasn't going to rent to me. He just thought that it's his property and he can do whatever he wants." No, that is housing discrimination. You have to know about your rights. So that's why we're educating people. We're going to mobile meetings. We've gone to a lot of the meetings. We've gone to the East Foundation of Houston. We've gone to Baker Ripley. We've gone to Y M C A for the National Services. We are trying to engage hard-to-reach people, right? And see what their needs are. We're also having some focus groups for stakeholders that we're developing right now. If you are a stakeholder and you want to participate in our focus groups about how to end rental housing discrimination, how to end housing discrimination in lending, and how can we get more affordable homes in areas of high opportunity, please contact me. I would love to include you into our focus groups. So those are some of the things that we're doing. We also have a Fair Housing Ambassadors Program, where we're using people just like you that are out there in the community, that are well-connected to members of your community, so that you can bring these conversations to your neighborhood and reach the people that we cannot reach and bring that feedback back to us. So this is what we've done so far. That community needs survey, we need to improve this number, right? And we're going to use you to do it. So please, complete a community needs survey. Let's get this number up. When Harris County had their community needs survey, they had six thousand surveys come through. If you see this number, we can do better with it. Share this with your friends. I see we have U of H here. Please, bring it to your campus, right? There's a plethora of people we need to know, we need to hear from people that we're going to serve. This is your community too. You're not just in school, you are a part of the community. Bring this survey to everybody, your friends, your family. Put in email distribution list, and let's see if we can improve this number. We also have done a lot of mobile meetings. Like I said, we have 21 Fair Housing Ambassadors. These are the things that we're doing to engage the community. If you have ideas on other ways how we can engage the community, let me know. We'd love to hear your suggestions. So we have talked to, this meeting people, surveys, presentations, and discussions. And it's taken a lot of time to do that. We can do more, so help us with that. So this is what we've heard so far, and all the people that we've talked to. Let's see if you feel some of the same ways too. We've heard that public transit could be better. I see a lot of heads nodding, right? And that's a good thing. We need to know what those problems are. We've heard gentrification is a huge issue. A lot of people are nervous about being displaced from their long-term communities through rising property taxes. We have another one, affordable housing, the rent is too high. I know we've heard that over some years, that the rent is too high, property values are really high, and it makes housing unaffordable for people, and they get pushed out. I was one of the people. My rent kept rising and I had to move in, and I felt the same way. Why am I the one that has to get pushed out? We want people to stay in the community where they can thrive of their choice, right? So gentrification is a problem, and unaffordable housing is a problem. We've heard about the flooding, the drainage, that's a huge problem. We've heard about the potholes, dries and disrepair, and inadequate and inaccessible sidewalks. We've heard about some social issues too. Nibbyism. Does anybody know what we mean when we say nibby? Not in my backyard? Yes, we know some people that say. And people are agreeing. So everyone agrees that these are some issues, maybe there are more. Tell us if there are more than these issues and any more housing and neighborhood concerns that you see that aren't included here. So we want to hear from you. So at this point, we are going to break out into roundtable discussions. If your table is a little light, please join another table. We want to have some in-depth conversations with you. We're going to bring out some maps. We're going to have an in-depth family discussion about how we can develop goals and strategies that will help improve overall quality of life for Houston. We're going to take some time to do that. We're going to have a moderator and a table at each table. Please review the ground rules that are in the center of your table, and we'll get started at this point. And after the roundtable discussion, we'll open up and have our public hearing portion. Thank you.
While our residents group up, we will head to the back and talk to some of our representatives that I've had today. There's a lot of movement right now. But generally, the information we're offering at these open houses includes fair housing. Our Department of France Division is gathering information for the plans that Sasha mentioned in the presentation. Basically, like residents can come here and give their input on one of the most important issues and one of the things they most like to see. We also highlight our accomplishments and let you know of like where in Houston we are completing activities and where we are continuing to develop things. We have sections for each of our major programs as well. So piece on home buyer assistance, representatives from our Economic Opportunities Specialist, representatives from home repair, and representatives from disaster recovery. We know these are the pressing issues to the public right now. So as you can see, residents are breaking up into groups. If you would like to give your opinion in a more substantial way than you already have, we've posted links to the Housing and Community Needs Survey that Sasha was mentioning in her presentation onto our Facebook page and other social media sites. So you can go check that out at your convenience. We're really trying to gather feedback in that way. Also, if you have feedback that you would like to give in person or if you have any questions for us that you would have asked here, maybe, if you were here tonight, we are open on Wednesdays from 1:00 to 4:00 at our office at 2100 Travis Street. Just come to the ninth floor and check in, and we will see you. No appointments required. So we hope that we can find some way to engage with you, either at another event similar to this or through our online channels. I will cut the livestream off here and open it back up when we're in public hearing mode. And we will, we hope to see you and hear from you in the future so we can get the most feedback from our community on, as we go forward, setting our priorities.
So we have a couple people who signed up to speak at our public hearing tonight. Our public hearing, if you would like to testify or come up here and have your comments on the record, you have three minutes. And we'll tell you when you have a minute remaining and when you're out of time. Three minutes to come up and say what you would like to say. This is not a question-and-answer session, but we have staff in the back, and so if you have questions, we're happy to answer them after the public hearing portion. If you would like to speak, we have two people sign up to speak, and at the end, these two people will ask if anybody else would like to speak. The first one is Tammy Rodriguez.
Actually, I said everything I needed to say.
Thank you. The next is Sean Marshall.
I don't necessarily have a point to make per se, but I do think this is a fantastic opportunity for all of us to come together and really thank the city and the department for kind of hosting this and putting it together. It's a fantastic set of data and everything that they kind of made available to us. So I think this is a great use of time and resources of getting us all together to talk about this. Fantastic.
Would anyone else like to comment this evening? Any other comment? Going once, going twice?
I'm not sure if I want to say it's related, you know.
Okay, my idea is smarter than loose judgment. And this is actually the first time I'm participating in the top of my minutes. But I did remember a lot, and I still don't know enough to probably say it's going to be relatable, but I just find that there are a lot of schools that are having difficulties as far as how well the students do. So, and I understand something about charter schools. So in order to, in order to get a charter school, you really have to build another school. So I think, why spend that money on that school? Why not invest that money in an existing school? Which is to me, the people are already there, the parents are there, the students are there. And just make shifts in education. If students are having difficulties because there's a lot of children, they have, their families are poor, and parents are not there, not because they want to be there, because they're working full-time, two jobs, maybe we can get like Big Brother or something like that, where you have people actually assisting these children better after school, our programs, and building a school. I mean, you know, training teachers better, or having a teacher that trains their existing teachers. I think that that's a better use of money.
Would anyone else have a desire to speak tonight? Tom, would you like to be? Tom, would you like to be? I wait long enough, somebody will.
Anthony May. I work with HSD. Some of the things that you're doing, I mean, great. When you have a car and there's something wrong with the car, a lot of times you don't need to get a new car. Sometimes you have to tune it up. And some of the problems that you have, they're good. You don't have to scrap them, you have to tune them up. I'm originally from Mississippi, and, you know, we did housing project. Went to college, major in biology, minor in chemistry. And I think when that home setting is good, because I teach kids that, you know, when they say they probably didn't go home, or when they confide things in you. What you're doing is good. Bringing information, letting them know, hey, that you can get a house, or things can get better. Bringing them information that they really don't know about. I think you should probably pat yourself on the back. A lot of times, we're trying to come up with something new. What we have, we just need to tune it up.
Any other takers? Would you like to speak closely?
Thank you, Mary, and thank you for all of the attendees who stuck with us throughout the evening. We appreciate you committing the evening to us. For those of you who are here from the U of H School of Social Work, I'll be seeing you on the 24th, I believe, for about an hour. So we'll get some more time to have a longer conversation. But we do appreciate your attendance here. What Sasha said really drives home to us. We struggle day in, day out with the challenges that you identified earlier in the surveys that we'll mention. And so it's good to check in and make sure that we are actually pushing in the direction that the community wants us to push in. Because there are meetings we go to where people are not telling us that affordable homes in all neighborhoods is an ideal type of community. And we want to hear that feedback as well. But we appreciate folks who understand the challenges, understand the work that we do, and give us that feedback as well as the pat on the back. We appreciate it. You can tell us mean things as well. You can tell us how to improve. But it's always good to hear that pat on the back when we're deep in the weeds, day in, day out, on the data, trying to get the multifamily development work in. So if you see a City of Houston employee here on your way out, do thank them for the work that they do and thank you for the entire team that made this happen. And thank you so much from the community for coming and expressing your viewpoints and giving us additional thoughts to go back and get to work on.
If you still have staff members, if you have tables back here who can explain our programs, please ask them hard questions. We also have a couple interactive activities. And also, our survey is still open. You could win a hundred-dollar gift card. We would love for you and your families and your neighbors to take that survey. We have some paper copies, and it's also online. Thank you all very much for your coming tonight and your time.